Good evening, I'd like to welcome you to the West Bridgewater School Committee. A call to order of the regular open meeting. Could you please stand for a pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the republic of America, and to the free will of which it stands, on the nation under God, in the principle of liberty and justice for all. In a moment of silence. Thank you. The listing of matters on the agenda are those reasonably anticipated by the chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. This meeting is being videotaped for cable. May I have an approval of the minutes from the March 7th, 2016 meeting?
Moved second.
Moved second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, thank you. And now for the recognitions, Mr. Barbell. I believe we have a recognition.
The recognition is for Jefferson Roberts for winning the local geography here in West Bridgewater and moving on to the state competition in Springfield. And I'll tell you, I've seen those questions unbelievably hard, so amazing that, you know, a second year here doing a great job, and we wish you continued success in the future. But again, unbelievable to move on even to that level, so congratulations, Jefferson.
And for some further recognitions with respect to the National History Day, I'd like to have Mr. Matthew Despier, the eighth grade history teacher class, do a much better job than I would acknowledge him.
All right. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Mr. Despier. I'm the grade eight history teacher here at West Bridgewater Middle Senior High School. Each year our grade eight students compete in the National History Day competition. This is a chance for our students to select a category that interests them. This year, the categories selected by the students were exhibits, papers, websites, and performances. This year's annual theme was Exchange, Encounter, and Exploration in History. The students used their creative energy and developed a project based on their specific interests in history. The assignment stresses project-based learning with a focus on skills in both research and presentation. The project and students that will now be recognized are either for an honorable mention, a winning project at the middle senior high school here that went on to represent the district at the regional competition at Brockton High School, and two projects that won at Brockton High School and will now represent the district at the state competition. Great job by all grade eight students and one high school student this year, and especially those students getting recognized tonight. Great job for your awesome projects. All right. There we go. First up, junior individual exhibit, "I Am Malala" by Samira Mohan. Dead Sea Scrolls: Exchange of Information from Past to Present by Joshua Poland. The Race to the South Pole by Jefferson Roberts. Alan Turing by Hannah Russo, who could not be in attendance tonight. Creation Through Exploration: Dr. James Naismith and Basketball by Jack Shea. All right, next is the junior group exhibit. So this was a group of four girls that worked collaboratively on this project. The project was Hiroshima. First up, Megan Willis. Next up, Grace Flynn. Next up, Mary Shidi. And last but not least in this specific group, Maggie McCaffrey. The next were honorable mentions. First up, it was junior individual exhibit Dorothy Dix by Caroline Nelson, who could not be in attendance. And the next one was a group exhibit for honorable mention. Excellent job by these three girls. Again, could not be in attendance. It was NASA by Julie Berkowitz, Sarah Miller, and Selena O'Connell. The last two. These specific exhibits really illustrated excellence in history. They were selected to go on to the next level here at the middle senior high school. We found them to be excellent. The judges at Brockton High School, the next level of competition, found them also to be excellent, and they'll be representing the middle senior high school at the state competition coming up this Saturday. So first off, and I want to say, high school kids aren't required to do National History Day this past year. However, this individual approached the history department, loves history, and was excited, and she'd kind of been through it before, but she wanted a chance to kind of compete, even though the rest of the high school wasn't doing it. So she sought us out as the history department to really go forward with this project. She did an excellent job. Name of the project, senior individual exhibit going on to the state competition, Be En Venu à la Cadi. Exploration into a New World and an Encounter with the British. Les Grande Range Boons by Colleen Daly.
Does Pia's not French?
No. That was a tough one. And the last one, eighth grade student did an excellent job. Will be representing the eighth grade here in the building at the state level competition this Saturday. The Armenian Genocide by Emma Ridlinski. Thank you.
When is the state competition?
This Saturday coming up.
Oh, great. Good luck.
Right, we'll take a short recess so you can all go out and weather the snow on April 4th.
It was January 4th.
Thank you very much. And so, under the superintendent's update, the junior prom, which was on April 1st, 2016, Dr. Oakley.
Junior prom was on Friday night, and it was the first grand march in our new gym, but the 70th grand march in West Bridgewater, and it went off without hitch. It was beautiful. It was great to not be squished in like sardines and on top of each other because we had so much room in that gym, because those bleachers sit over 600 people, and then it was great. It was just wonderful. So I don't know, Mr. Barbell, if you want to talk a little bit about how the prom went?
Yeah, the students did an amazing job, starting with singing the national anthem. Nice job part of that. It was, you know, being the first time, there's a lot of, you know, how are we going to do this? What's the lineup going to look like? What's the, you know, the routine going to look like? But Mrs. Graziano and Mr. Finley did a wonderful job setting it up, and like Dr. Oakley said, it went off without a hitch. The kids were great. They looked great. They acted great, most importantly. They were great, you know, from beginning to end. The night was great at the Mockingbird. Food was great. They danced, they had a nice time, so no complaints, no issues whatsoever. Just proves again, we've got great kids, and they want to have a good time and also be responsive, so very lucky.
Thank you. And the end of the school year improvement meeting for May 4th, 2016.
Yeah, every year we have a combined meeting with school committee, each school's school improvement council, administrators, and people that have been on the strategic planning committee over the year. And this year, one of my goals was working on making sure that we're doing the best possible process for strategic planning. So we didn't have regular strategic planning meetings this year, but we do want to have the end of the year meeting to celebrate all of the accomplishments that each school has done over the school year. So that will be on May 4th. So if the school committee members want to come to that, and the school improvement council members, and anyone else from the community that wants to be there, you'll hear about some of the great things that each school has done this year, the goals that they achieved, and also highlights of goals that they're looking to achieve for next year. And that will start at 5:30 with dinner provided by our food service, and then we'll go right into the presentations. There'll also be some students there presenting different things that we feel are showing off the 21st century education, the 21st century skills that the kids are getting, and the teaching and learning in our individual classrooms at each level. So that should be, it's usually a very, very good night, so look forward to that.
Absolutely. Next is the 2016-2017 school calendar.
In your packet, you have the school calendar. You can see that it's a little bit different format than we've had in the past, and the reason for that is because this is actually on a Google form versus a Word platform, and it makes it more efficient and easier to update it because you can actually put this live versus having to change the entire calendar every year when it's on a Word document. So it's the same thing, it's just a little bit different format. Instead of going across, it goes up and down. We actually looked at it, it's a little less busy the way it's set up with it on the side. This is a draft, so please, when you have some spare time, if you could look at it, double-check the dates. Jody and I look at it and try to scrutinize it and make sure that things are okay, but when you look at the same thing over and over again, sometimes you miss anything that could possibly be a mistake, whether it be one of the colors, or one of the days, or something missed on a half-day, or the holidays, or whatever. So go through and look at that, and then you'll vote on it next month. The only thing that's already set in stone really is the beginning of the year, which based on our policy, we would start before Labor Day anyway. So that's a given because it's part of our policy, and some of the things that do change, if you look at the holiday break in December, the holiday is actually on a Sunday. So Christmas Eve then is Saturday, and we could have gone, we could go with a half-day on the 23rd, but it basically tends to be a wasted day. So what we did last year is we went with full day off the day before the 24th, so I propose we do that again, but you can talk about it if you'd like. And it shows you in June what the last day of school is with no snow days. Woo-hoo, no snow days! Or the last day of school with five snow days, so it does have both of those there, and vacations and that type of stuff. So there's really not that much of a change from this year to next year. Any questions?
Just a comment, I like the format.
You like it?
I think it reads, it's not as cluttered. It may have all the same information, but just the way that it's laid out, it's just so much, it feels like there's a lot of stuff missing.
It's not as busy.
Yeah.
But yet, everything's there, it's just not as busy, yeah. And it will be easy to update every year because it's, you can change it, going right into it instead of having to change a PDF. All right.
All right. The Reed's Collaborative Quarterly Report.
You have the Reed's Collaborative Quarterly Report. You know that you get one quarterly from Reed's and quarterly from North River. I don't think I need to go over it with you, but if you have any questions on anything, please let me know. The budget has been passed, and I believe that's attached to it also. That's the overview of it. So it's more just an FYI that collaborators have to make sure that every board that's a member gets the quarterly updates.
Great. And the last item is the middle senior high school school building committee update.
Well, on this beautiful
Snowy evening.
Snowy evening on April 4th, you know, we really do want to get the fields completed, but it's tough when we have a major snowstorm, which it's turned into in the middle, at the beginning of April. So the majority of work that needs to be done is still on the fields, but we still believe that we're on the same critical path to be done so that we can start having our first athletics here on the grounds again in the fall, which will be field hockey and football. So we're still on that path to do that, even if it snows into May or June, which we hope it doesn't too. Am I jinxing? Am I jinxing everyone? You know what it is, you guys can't see it, but we were just saying up here, we're looking out these beautiful, it actually is kind of pretty out there. You don't have to go out in it.
Or if you want to move.
And then, we're finishing up the punch list, and slowly, the number is going down. So we're wrapping things up. We're ready for the whole thing to be done. It's been a long time. But we've got a beautiful new building outfit, so we're very, very happy. And the fields will be just as impressive when everything's set and done.
Thank you very much. Now, before we go on to the presentations, I did want to just welcome our student rep, Maya Hay, so I apologize for not addressing her in the beginning.
Should have had her sing the national anthem.
I know, you should have. So thank you for coming in. Now, under presentations, we have the coordinated program review by Dr. Hanscom.
Okay. So I came and talked to you in October about the results of our coordinated program review that we had last year. So the next slide will help me get started. All right, so that's the, that was what I went over in October, so just that we had the review last year, what they did, it came in, it was an exhaustive and exhausting process. And then we received our findings in September, and we had one year, we were given one calendar year to correct any areas that were found partially implemented or not implemented. And then, these were our findings. So we, there were, out of 39 special ed criteria, we were found to be partially or not implementing three. Civil rights, out of 27 criteria, we were found to be partially implementing two. And I am proud, but also annoyed to say that in ELL, there were no findings, and there was 100% compliance, because I don't oversee ELL, and Dr. Oakley does. Yeah, I said it.
You may ignore that.
No, but I really should speak to that because Dr. Oakley and Mrs. Quealy were, worked very, very hard on getting the ELL stuff together, and what they put together was so good that the state has asked that we share ours with other folks, and we are doing that so they can see. No, I know, it's disgusting to have, make me say this, but it's true. Like, the lady who came and looked at our ELL stuff was like, she was very, very strict in terms of the procedures, like there was no money, she was not me. It was like all business. And she was gushing about the ELL stuff, because a lot of stuff has changed, and so nobody really knew what to do, and we apparently did, so that is wonderful. For special ed and civil rights, we had a couple, a few things we had to fix, so the next slide will just tell you how we did that. So for SE 6, Determination of Transition Services, I trained all of the staff in the middle senior high school to make sure that we were in compliance with this. I thought we were all along, but it was a philosophical difference that I lost. So as a result, we changed the way we plan, transition plan for students ages 14 and up slightly. Also, I read every IP that comes over, and I'm making sure when I do that, that we're writing the vision statements the right way. So that's one. Our CPAC, our Special Education Parent Advisory Council, we have had a banner year this year. So I would go in the past, run these CPAC meetings once a year, and Donna would come, and that was pretty much it. We didn't have a lot of participation, and they wanted more. So we were, this year we've elected officers, we have bylaws, and we've met three times so far this year. The first time we did the parents, I did the Parents Rights presentation, which I have to do every year. In January, we had Dr. Denny Howley from North River Collaborative come and talk about behavioral health for our kids, supporting them in school and at home. And then just last week, Mrs. Laura Keen, our school psychologist at Howard School, did a presentation on calm classroom, so that parents could see what their kids were doing in school. And we've had like nine or 10 parents at each one, which I know doesn't sound great, but for us, we're like, what? It's amazing. We also have a CPAC webpage on the district website where we're posting all of the presentations, all of the, all of the presentations that we've been given, and the minutes of the meetings, and all of the resources are there. We're also creating a resource page for different disability types where families can go, and let's say they have a child with ADHD, they can pop on that, and there'll be all sorts of resources in there as well. So we really, really nailed SE 39 this year. And then SE 55, they had an issue with where one of our special education rooms was located at the Howard, and we made that change this summer, and so that was what we needed to do for that. And then the next one was for civil rights. So out of 27 criteria, we were found to be partially implementing two. The first was accessibility of the stage at the Roseell McDonald School. So a lift was purchased in November 2015 and was installed in January of 2016, and then the DESC viewer came and viewed the lift in action in February 2016.
Did they use it?
No, so, okay, you don't really want me to tell the story? So she came to, it was a new person who I didn't know, and I was so proud, I walked her in, and I was like, look at our new lift! And she was like, really nice, she was like, that's great! I was like, you don't need to like see it at work or anything. She's like, well, could I? And I was like, I don't know, okay. So I hit the button, and it happened. But luckily, I saw the plug, and I realized it wasn't plugged in. So I plugged it in, and I started praying, and then
Did she get on it?
No, but that's good, that's good, because I wasn't comfortable. Yeah, we said we were going to. Anyway, Mr. Holden helped a great deal with that process, so I do want to thank you and Mrs. Smith.
We're good. We're all done? Signed off?
But in terms of the DESE, we are absolutely good and fine, and I know that that was a big deal, so I'm grateful to the committee for the support of getting that done as quickly as we did. And then the second one we were found out of partially implementing is the same issue that was on the special ed one, the Howard School classroom. They just cite you for it in two different places, so changing the location of the rooms corrected that. And then finally, we received this email on February 29th, which basically says, we are pleased to inform you that no further progress reports are required. So we're finished for now. We'll have a mid-cycle review in 2017, 2018, which seems so much closer than it should. And all they do in the mid-cycle is look at the things that they were, we were found to be out of compliance on. And then a full review in 2020, 2021.
Just make sure that lift's plugged in?
Seriously. But yeah, so that's, that's the update. We are finished for now, and thank you to everybody who helped get us back into compliance.
And thanks to everyone all out, because it was, it's a lot, a lot of work.
Thank you very, very much.
And for the things that we had to, I mean, we did very, very, very well, so thank you.
All right, and I am going to go home because I'm not wearing boots, and I live on the Cape, so. Thank you again, Dr. Hanscom.
My pleasure. So under the business, I believe, let's see, the field trip to New York City, Mr. Cray.
Hello, all.
Hi.
So this is the first year that I'm teaching a TV3 course, so combined with the possibility of a senior intern, students can now come through my program for all four years, which has been, it's been an exciting year. This is also my first full-year course, and it's been great to be able to dig real deep into some of the science behind television production, having them for the full year. The class itself is documentary filmmaking, so it's a different side of television production than what I've been able to teach here at the school. And I've got a great group of kids, 12 kids total, 10 seniors, two juniors, all overachievers, and I couldn't be happier having them. So I want to do something different for them as far as taking them on a field trip is concerned, and New York, of course, has a multitude of resources for education, especially in the television environment, a lot of resources that we don't have anywhere else, including Boston. So I am asking to take them on a field trip on April 29th to New York City. Maybe about five or six of my students in that class just went to New York on the big trip a couple of weeks ago, but they're, actually, all that did was promote their need to have to go again, so. So that trip worked out well, and I would say this one would do the same. So I'd be bringing them to the Paley Center for Media. I'm imagining not too many people have heard of that, formerly called the Museum of Broadcast Television. And basically, it stands to be the nation's archive for all things sitcoms, all the way back to the 50s, any Johnny Carson show you ever want to see, Olympic events, Olympic tragedies, all things news. So it's a great source of archives for my students to be able to kind of get in touch with some of the things they might not otherwise known, because they don't realize they can actually watch video on their television anymore, they're all watching on their phone. So there's a brief tour that we take going through the museum, and then through the media center, and then my plan was to have some sort of worksheet that they'd have to fill in to find certain archival mediums, just to open things up to them to realize what they can find there. And then from there, we've got a total of about 90 minutes there altogether. So that's one stop, and the second major stop is the Museum of Moving Pictures, which is pretty self-explanatory. And here, we'll be doing what's called the Behind the Screen Tour. It's also 90 minutes, and basically, they talk about how video is created, marketed, and then aired. A lot of things they'll learn in my classroom, but this is another resource for them. They talk about careers in television, and they have a lot of television medium archives there as well. A lot of hands-on, a lot of interactive-type displays and games for them to play, and hopefully at the end of the day, they'll actually realize they've learned something, which is always a plus. And I did, because they're students of mine in a classroom I see every other day, we were able to talk a lot about this over the last month, and I said, we have time for one more stop, what do you think? And one thing they wished they had done in New York a couple of weeks ago is the Wax Museum, Madame Tussaud's Wax Museum. So I saved that third, and I'm pretty sure we'll have time to get it in there, so they're looking forward to that. But I told them there's no rushing through the first two museums just to get to that one. Because of the small class, transportation-wise, I went a lot of different routes, I'm very familiar with transportation through the ski trips that we do, and the best bet was for us to actually take the Peter Pan bus line out of Providence, and it's actually a pretty quick trip and fairly inexpensive, $66 around trip, and I'm trying to keep the price down for them. So we leave at 6:30 a.m., arrive there around 10:15, and we're right in the heart of things right off the bat. On the way back, we leave New York at 7:00 and arrive back in Providence at 10:45 p.m. So we get a full day. It's a very, I have a schedule already done, and it's very packed, and so we'll be moving right from one place to the next. And so we'll be moving right from one place to the next and I generally run a tight ship, so this will be the case here too. And there, it might be listed on that sheet, twelve students, but it's actually ten. Two had other commitments, but ten students said they could make it. And good news, a few people started getting back to me on student discounts from the museums. So as opposed to one-fifty, they'll actually be one-thirty. So they could save that twenty dollars for New York's finest pizza. And if they stop at a Uno's, there's going to be a problem.
So that's. I'd like to make a motion to approve this field trip as presented.
Moved?
Second.
Second, any discussion, further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Great, have an awesome time.
Students, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. And also under business, we have Mr. Bodwell with parking fees.
I'll just give you a little history of where we're at now with our parking lots. We have two-hundred-and-thirty-three numbered spots in the lot. That doesn't include at least six handicap spots. We have, as of right now, we have five visitor spots. Of the two-hundred-and-thirty-three, eighty-three are for staff and that leaves about one-hundred-and-forty-five parking spots for our students. We require the students to have a parking pass sticker on their car. And so, so we can identify who they are, you know, what car's there. For simple things, if lights are on, if they're parked, you know, illegally or something like that. So we want to be able to know who's parking each of the spots. And to get a parking pass, they'd need to commit their license and their registration and we make copies of both and they fill out all the required paperwork. The issue that we had this year was, we technically ran out of spots. Because so many kids, any kid who had the license and registration wanted the parking pass. So, you know, about two or three weeks ago, Mrs. Page and I were like, we have no more parking passes to give out because we've given out that, you know, one-hundred-and-forty-five or so. But what, further investigation, we found out that some students had never driven to school. Some drove once a week, some drove once a month. So, you know, because we had numbered spots and that's, they had to park in that particular spot. So, we were looking for ways to discourage students from simply getting a parking pass if they're not driving every day. In doing some research, we found that other schools do charge a parking fee. East Bridgewater, twenty-five, Abington, twenty-five, Silver Lake, fifty, upon a quick, fifty. Plymouth, a hundred, and Bridgewater-Ranham, a hundred dollars for parking. This parking money, if, if approved, would go back into the parking lot, whether it's restriping the parking lot, new signage, other, you know, parking stickers themselves, you know, to kind of keep that fund going. So, we're looking at, you know, potentially, and again, this is just simply my suggestion, but a fee of twenty-five dollars for the year for the students for parking.
Are parking spots reassigned? And now this was our first year, but will they be reassigned each year? So if you parked at one of those, or as a junior, will you be parked at one of those?
More than likely, but we have not made a decision yet, but more than likely, we'll not assign particular spots next year. We'll give out the passes and then, we'll give, they'll have a number on there, so we'll be able to identify who they are and their license plate number, but we won't assign a particular spot. There's some pitfalls to doing that. You know, if a visitor came in and parked there, if a substitute, if a parent parked there, if we had snow piled in a particular spot, then they would have to move anyhow. And that just started the ripple effect of kids not in their own spot. So, live and learn, but that's most likely going to be our suggestion moving forward.
That will be helpful too, if there's a hundred permits out there, but only seventy-five are driving to school and there's plenty of spots.
Right. And we know, it seems every year, more and more students end up with a vehicle driving to school. And a lot of them, you know, need them for transportation to, you know, work after school or things like that, so.
I mean, that sounds like a lot of spots. I mean, in the old school, we didn't have that many spots, did we?
No, I, you know, it stretched down, you know, to Spring Street on both sides, you know, heading down the hill, but it was not that many spots. It was probably a little over a hundred.
Yeah, okay.
I would guess.
Is there a possibility to add a couple more visitor spots in that first row? I know there's two. Maybe, next year before you assign spots, add a couple more, three more there? Because I know that's one of the things I've heard, is people come by the visitor spots here and then they say, those are taken. We have two there. And they're like, they're always taken up. So, if we just, before you start assigning for next year, so it would cut you down to like, say, one forty-two.
Right.
But.
I think we could do that, could make those just plain visitor spots or rather also put some staff signs on the side. Right now, we have designated the first seven spots on either side, on the other side of the parking lot for staff. But they're really not, there's no signage there right now, but we could absolutely add some more visitor spots.
So Maya, what do you think of the twenty-five dollar fee?
No, I think it'd be good to like, deter them. I mean, I graduate, so I don't really have to worry. But, I mean, I do know other schools do do it. And like, it would be nice, like, if the parking lot ever does get po- holes like the other school, to have that money to fix that problem. Because I know track practice is there as well and maybe they won't when we get the track, but it's still, like, I like the idea. Because then like the signs that you will need to say staff, you can pay for through the fees that you get.
And then those extra fees can go to plowing too.
Absolutely. Shrubs or plantable grasses alongside some tall grasses and so forth. Keep them in the parking lot and not walking out into the main.
A pathway between the parking lot.
That is coming.
In the.
That's coming.
How about rock salt for outside where you park?
Yes.
Yes, a lot of rock salt.
Yes.
Hey, any further discussions? Can I have a motion?
So what are we approving? Are we approving a twenty-five dollar fee or, or just a fee in general?
I mean, it could be something to change, but I think to exceed twenty-five.
I think that's reasonable.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve a parking fee for student parking.
In the amount of twenty-five?
Not to exceed twenty-five.
Not to exceed twenty-five at this time?
At this time, correct.
Moved?
Second.
Second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bodwell.
Doesn't exceed twenty-five, you'll be fine.
And now also under business, we have the dreaded lunch prices.
I know, I've been coming to you for this, but it is part of the Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act of two thousand and ten that they're requiring us to increase our lunch prices. Because we get reimbursed now about two-thousand-and-seventy-five cents per lunch for free and reduced. And they don't want us to run our program on the free and reduced reimbursement. So they would like us to kind of get our prices back up to what we're getting reimbursed from the federal government. So, I am here asking for a twenty-five cent increase. They suggest a four-point-two-seven percent increase every year, which would bring us to two dollars and fifty-three cents at the elementary, about two-eighty at the high school. So, right now, it's two-twenty-five at the elementary and we're looking to go to two dollars and fifty cents. And it's two-fifty at the high school and we're looking to go to two dollars and seventy-five cents. And I can't reiterate how well Anne Marie has done with food service here, but I don't know if you buy lunch or not.
I'm for the wraps, guys.
Nice, so am I. I know, if hopefully he's eating for lunch all the time.
The food is excellent.
It definitely has improved, but along with that also goes, you know, increase in cost for the food because we're finding better stuff. So, it would help the program and it would keep us in a line. We are going to be audited in two years and they're going to be looking for these jumps. Anne Marie and I both agree that we don't want to come every year and ask you for twelve cents a year. So we're trying to do like every other year for the small increases if we could. So I am proposing two-fifty for the elementary and two-seventy-five for the middle senior high school.
And this is, I'm assuming we're still on the lower side in comparison to districts?
East Bridgewater, Abington, and BR, their high schools are all three dollars, about two-seventy-five for the elementary, so we're still below.
Still a little bit below.
My money's worth.
So I'd like to make a motion to increase the lunch prices to two-fifty at the elementary level and two-seventy-five to the middle senior high school.
Moved?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Sarah. And the North River Collaborative Agreement, this is actually a voting issue by Mrs. Malicek.
So, as you guys know, we're a member of the North River Collaborative. And within this collaborative, it used to be eight member districts. And last month at the school committee meeting of the North River Collaborative, they voted to add another district. So the, the North River Collaborative School Committee voted to add a ninth, a ninth district. So, it, now for that to go forward, we need to vote as an individual school committee to amend the agreement that we have, adding that ninth district to it. So I've been asked to bring a motion to add the ninth district onto the North River Collaborative Agreement. And after, if we were, I can, we'll then give you my opinion if you would like, if you would like to hear that.
Who is it, Stoneton?
The ninth district would be Stoneton. I, I wasn't in favor of adding a ninth district at this time. Part of what I like about our North River Collaborative is we are very small. So there's eight member, nine member districts as of right now. But we service about thirty districts. So it's not inclusive as far as we won't provide services to other districts. And I'm not suggesting that we don't provide services to Stoneton because they're a huge part of our collaborative right now. The things that they don't get, being a non-member district, is they don't come to the school committee meetings. So they're not part of the discussion of the needs or the services or things like that. Although if they have needs, they're probably very, they could very well be very similar to what we have. They're able to take advantage of any of our transportation, our classrooms, our programs, the professional development. There's so many great things that North River does for us and, you know, like I said, approximately thirty districts in our area. When you are a member district, you have a say. And you also, there is a financial benefit to being a member district. If there is a surplus at the end of the year, it is given back to us. So I think last year, we got back, I think it was somewhere around like twenty-three thousand dollars, twenty-five. So it's not, I'm not talking about, you know, as. Yeah, it's more than we're going to get with parking fees. You know, as you know, every, every amount, every amount matters. One of the big things at North River right now, that, and part of their mission is to increase enrollment in their programs. And so, listening to all the different reasons of why we should add another member district, they were saying, you know, we want to increase our enrollment. But all of the data and information that they brought to us didn't prove that adding a district would do that, because they're already taking advantage of our services now. So as a small district, when, in representing West Bridgewater, I felt like, I didn't see the benefit. And everything that people were bringing to me didn't, didn't sell me on, oh, if Stoneton becomes a member district, we're going to see increased enrollment. The things I saw is that they already have all those advantages. It was just going to make a larger committee. And it was going to make, you know, instead of being one voice of eight on our school committee and also on our superintendent's committee, we were going to be one of nine. And this was, in my recollection, this was only the second district that's ever come to us and said that they want to join North River. The last one was Avon. And we brought on, this one, you know, we're bringing them on too. So, the other thing that worries me here is the pattern is, we're not, they're not out actively recruiting districts to say, hey, come join our collaborative. They're not. It's, the districts came to them, but I don't know how many more districts would come. And one of the things that someone said in a meeting was, well, it's just one district. And that is true, it is one district, but one, Stoneton is actually equal to three West Bridgwaters if you look at the students. Now, the other benefits could be, you bring in Stoneton and you bring in, a lot of what North River does for us is they bring us grants. That provide things that we couldn't get on our own, which are great. And bringing on Stoneton could get us additional grants. And I a hundred percent agree with that. They could bring us more grants. But then when we get a grant at North River, it's divided up. And so, amongst the member districts. And so, and some of them are done by district and some of them are done by students. So, depending on how that goes, we could be one of nine or, you know, we're a small district. So, those were my concerns. To be honest with you, it, I'm not in favor of amending the agreement. I say that, but I am in favor of, you know, welcoming Stoneton to take advantage of all that North River has to offer. And it is going to probably pass anyways, but I don't feel right saying like, I'm all in on this because I, I hope I'm wrong. I hope, you know, I went to the, what was it called? The Strategic Planning Meeting for North River Collaborative. And a lot of the staff from North River was there and they didn't have any reservations about it. They thought it would be great, you know, another district, more students, more opportunities. And so I hope they're right. But in my mind, I thought, I saw it as, okay, our curriculum director over at North River, if we have an issue, we call her and she responds to us. You know, you throw in another district and, you know, it's just one more. I don't know if, they, they didn't seem to have any concerns about like their inner, you know, back office, for instance. They're not going to add additional back office staff when they add another district. I, I see that as a potential problem. I hope I'm wrong. I hope, you know, Stoneton comes on board and that, you know, our enrollment does go up and that our back office costs remain the same and, you know, all is, all is good. But, so, that's, that's my feeling on it. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Well, well, I'm sorry.
Well, in, in the radius of, excuse me, of surrounding towns that belong to this, to this collaborative already, are we, are we forming? Do we now have somewhat of a circle? And are we now extending it out beyond that circle? Do you, do you know that off the top of your head?
Yeah, I, I'm sorry, I don't have the map with me right now. It doesn't make a perfect, we, we currently don't make a perfect circle.
Well, I, I don't mean it to be perfect, but.
But Stoneton does touch towns that we are, that are member districts right now.
Are they, will they be the, so to speak, the furthest away? Or, or are we, or are we stretching? Or is the collaborative stretching?
No, it's, it's just a funky shape.
Because we have Hanover.
We have Hanover?
Yeah.
Well, I'm sorry, I, I can't remember where they're centered.
Rockland, but some of our transportation is actually centered in Stoneton, believe it or not. Because we brought on a large transportation department that was in need of Stoneton's. And so, we actually have an office in Stoneton now too. So there's a lot of things that, there's a lot of things that seem to make sense and I hope it really works out. But for West Bridgewater, it doesn't make sense for us to encourage growth at North River Collaborative to continue at such a rate that, you know.
Do you have an opinion?
It doesn't benefit us.
I do have an opinion. I was one of the superintendents that, I am not convinced that adding another district, whether it be Stoneton or, or any other, is an advantage to our students in West Bridgewater. So from my point of view, it was a selfish reason, but I like being one of eight. I feel like I have a big voice in North River Collaborative when I sit at the superintendent's meetings. I know the difference between not having as big a voice, because we also belong to Reed Collaborative and I'm one of eighteen. And so, I do get, you don't have as big a voice and you're, you know, even smaller and you get less. So I've seen both ways. So I was not for having someone else come in, but we were in the minority with that.
How many students do we have in North River? How many students do we have in North River? More than we have at Reed's?
Yeah.
And then, we have services.
Like way more?
Like seventy-five percent of our district students are probably in North River, at least. Why seventy-five percent?
Do you think that they'd ever say no district joining? Like, what's the criteria to?
We do have a criteria and it goes, you know, we look, there isn't anything that says you have to meet these certain needs, which that was kind of interesting. And we just compared their district to our districts and our existing districts. And we do have, we have a bit of diversity in our district. So, we're pretty small. Avon's pretty small. But then, Bridgewater-Ranum's part of the collaborative and they're a large school. So is Whitman-Hanson. And they're comparative to Stoughton, so in size. The thing that I didn't think was comparative is, those are both two towns put together to get that population where you have a single town. But it, but I think part of why I even brought this up to you guys here and why I even feel comfortable not voting for it, even though I know next Monday, I'm going to be sitting at a school committee meeting with my new Stoughton representative. And I will welcome them and I really hope, I really do hope that there is success in it. I just want there to be thought put behind this because in the last two school districts that have come to North River, they've accepted them. And I don't necessarily think that's a wrong decision. I just think it really needs to be thoughtful and we need to look at if it will grow and if that's, if the solution to increasing enrollment and making it a stronger program is more numbers. And I'm not convinced that it is. I hope that this does help and it becomes, you know, the collaborative succeeds because a lot of what we do depends on North River succeeding. I just want to make sure that it's kind of, it's, in my, because I've sat at a couple meetings and been at the minority. And with the staff, too, at North River, they were shocked that I wasn't for it. And they were like, tell me why. And I was like, well, I don't always think that bigger is necessarily better or more is better. And it's pretty evident, I mean, look at the town I decided to live in. You know, it shouldn't be really, you know, a mystery to anyone here. I like the close-knit community and that's what you have at North River. And so, the member districts, it's a small, it's a small group. Nine is still a small group, too. I'm not saying it isn't. It's just, you know, what kind, what's our vision for it? To increase enrollment is great. Independence Academy is one of North River's great things that they're doing now. And it's in Brockton. Brockton, the town of Brockton, isn't a member district. So, again, I'm not saying I want to exclude anyone from that. It's just right now, with the small member district core, we really have a, we have a voice over there. And it's a great resource for us, being small. We don't have every opportunity for every one of our students on our own. But through the collaborative, we have, you know, endless opportunity. And since we're able to bring our issues to them and they're able to address them quickly, you know, that's what I see as a benefit. And like I said, when I was at the Strategic Planning Meeting, all the staff members that were there, I forget some of the people, but Dr. Denny was one of the people that I was speaking with. And she's like, oh, we can definitely handle another district. That's good to hear. I just hope that that's the truth.
Well, and I mean, our perspective, too, is we end up getting a smaller piece of pie. You know, so now, if we're sharing a grant, they'll say, oh, but the grant will be bigger. But it may not be. And we get a smaller piece of the pie because we're small. And, you know, some other superintendent said, if they broke, don't fix it, you know. North River's a very well-run collaborative and we're doing well. So, we just didn't feel like, we just didn't feel that there was a preponderance of evidence that it would benefit us.
Am I to assume, based on our conversation between Molly and Dr. Oakley, that you two were among the minority in this voting?
Yes.
Were you two the only?
No, we weren't the only. And what was interesting is, it was brought up to Dr. Oakley at a superintendent's meeting and then it was brought up to me in a school committee meeting. And I hadn't spoken to her about it. And we had the same views on it at different, in two different settings. And we were, when it was presented to me at the school committee, it was kind of like, you know, this is great. And we both saw the, wait a second, we have some questions. And the questions that we asked were never brought back and with, you know, oh, definitely, you add another district, you increase enrollment. They're actually brought back data very honestly, saying, well, other collaboratives have added districts and it hasn't increased the enrollment until about the third, fourth, or fifth year. So, it would eventually, but it was, it could eventually. But it wasn't, it wasn't like this.
Overwhelming increase.
Yeah, this overwhelming boom. But I don't, I just, again, I feel uncomfortable in saying that I don't want to agree with this because I, at the core of it, I do believe working together in a collaboration is a great thing. It's just, from a West Bridgewater School Committee perspective, the benefits, I don't see the benefits for us. So, that's what, and with that said.
It's more the principle of the thing.
Yeah. You know, so far, only two school districts have voted. Then, they've both voted yes to amend the agreement. And it has to pass by a two-thirds vote. And my prediction would be that it will pass by a two-thirds vote, even if we were to not vote in favor of it. So, it's interesting.
So, the question is, does this committee want to be the black chief on the voting list?
Well, I think Molly has supported it, I mean, many various ways. And she's definitely had, has taken the time to think this through and, you know, all the effects on West Bridgewater. And that's why you're a member of this collaborative, because how does it affect us and our kids? So, and Dr. Oakley came up, I thought that was interesting. You two never spoke and you had the same impression.
I thought it was. It said something to me about that, you know, it wasn't just being, I don't know, pushing back for no reason.
Right.
This is a tough one.
Yeah, and you know what is kind of tough about it is, and I caution the way I say this, is the way we vote won't, I don't think will actually impact the outcome. But I still think it's important to vote with how, I personally need to vote with how I feel about it. And I agree. That's what I'm gonna do.
Okay, would you like to put a motion forward?
Yeah, so the motion that I am to present to you is to change the North River Collaborative Agreement to include the Stoughton as a member district.
Okay, so this is a voting issue. Any further discussion?
Well, nobody's seconded it.
It's gonna be seconded.
Oh, second, anyone second?
I'll second it. I don't know how I'm gonna vote, but.
Any further discussion?
Are we voting individually?
Nope.
No.
I'm still.
I think we'd go with Molly's gut.
Yeah, I guess I'm more believing that, based on both, as Susan clearly stated, based on both of them stating clearly that, under two different circumstances, that they didn't feel that it was a tremendous asset to the district to have another district involved, I would question whether or not us voting it for it or not, as to how it affects it or not, is gonna help us in the long run. I would prefer that they understand, that they understand that we are a small area, a small district, and that we like what we have now, period.
And I think that's what this vote, or not voting for it, would say. But I do want to make sure that we, after we do decide on this, that North River, I am completely supportive of North River, even though I'm not supportive of this vote. And I think you all, that's why I've been struggling with this, because I don't want to.
Ian, this wouldn't be a vote, you're not, even when you decided that you didn't want Stoughton, it's not a vote against Stoughton.
No.
It's a vote against getting bigger.
Yeah, it's just a membership.
But Molly, what's the sense of it goes, if it's eight, it's gonna be nine? Does that mean it's gonna be nine, gonna be ten?
Well, and that's, and that's why.
That's another side of the coin, right.
And that's why I never, that's why throughout this, it would have been a lot easier for me to say, believe me, about eight weeks ago, to say, sure, I'm for this. Because we actually dragged the vote out because I wanted further discussion and more people's feedback. And, you know, because I wanted it to be a thoughtful decision and I want it, and it has been a thoughtful decision. So, and now, I really hope, you know, they'll go forward and it will be successful. But it's still, my initial thoughts are that for us. But North River as a whole, I mean, it's been so good to us and it will continue. And they're very professional. I don't believe that, you know, I don't see a downside to making sure they know how we feel about something.
So, assuming that we're not in favor of this amending the collaborative agreement, when you make your presentation at the next meeting, will you have the opportunity to explain why we voted the way we did?
Yes. And, I mean, they're very aware of how I feel. I haven't been shy in explaining to them, you know, my concerns. And, you know, they've, and they've been great in providing information when I've asked questions and gone. And it's just the information that's come back has never been such that made me want to change my mind about what was, what was best for my, in my opinion, what was best for West Bridgewater and what was best for the collaborative, even though I was in the minority. So.
You would imagine, Molly, that they don't really have any set criteria that districts need to meet. Is there any talk up with the staff or something else?
Well, it's based on the committee's decision and they, they have, like.
Yeah, that came up, though, at Strategic Planning. One of the goals of Strategic Planning, one of the objectives, is to take a look at, review what the criteria is now and make sure that we have set criteria. So, that is actually an objective that they're gonna be working on over the next year.
So, that's a win?
Yeah.
Yeah, right now, they just basically had, they had a criteria, but it wasn't, it was things, it was questions that the district had to answer. But there was no, from the answers, there was no, like, that would make them a part of it. And then, part of what was hard about that is they gave us the answers for all the existing eight districts. And there's not exactly a pattern for who's already a member. So, it's kind of tricky.
All right, so, the motion before the committee is.
To amend the agreement to include.
To move forward with the ninth district.
To amend the North River Collaborative Agreement to add another district. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor? I vote no.
No, no.
No.
Unanimous.
Unanimous, no. Thank you. Molly, thank you so much for.
Thank you, Molly.
Oh, you're pondering.
How large, and I don't want to stay on this subject much longer. How large is North River in comparison to Reed's? Dr. Oakley?
Reed's is a lot bigger. Reed's has, I think it's eighteen districts.
So, it's twice the size?
Yeah.
Okay. Because I'm a little more.
And Reed's has a city. It's a town, isn't it?
Yeah, lack of, in case none of you know, or all of you don't know, I'm sorry. I'm a little closer to what goes on with Reed's due to my wife being a teacher there. So, I kind of get more of their issues and problems because of their size, in my eyes. And I just don't want to see that happening with what we have with North River, because I enjoy what we have with North River.
We have a great thing going with them.
And I'm sure we'll make that clear at your.
That's my opinion, for all's worth.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, so, the Costa Rica Exchange Program. Unfortunately, because of the lack of numbers at the mandatory parent meeting, which was March 24th, I believe, three families and students showed at that meeting. I was present. We will not be able to engage in a meaningful discussion about voting that in, unfortunately. But there was discussion that we would look into every other year, maybe?
Correct.
Or some other options. If you may recall, Mr. Bodwell had done a presentation via slideshow, I believe, or how do you want to say that?
It's called Move Note.
Move Note. Okay, again. And although these families and students were disappointed, they were also encouraged at the same time that it doesn't mean that the program is gone.
We may look to swap it, so they would come here next winter again.
Right.
And we would potentially go there the following summer.
So, we didn't end up discussing any issues that were before us at our last meeting because of the non-attendance or the lack of attendance. So, next is the school committee's annual town report letter. That is before you. I've drafted a proposed town letter. And I would just look for any, I guess, feedback or input other than what you see. This will go into the town book. Any questions, concerns about that? And now, moving on to the approval of policies. Policy eighty-three oh five, which is the bullying plan. That was myself and Mrs. Smith. With the help of Mr. Bodwell and the Safe Schools Committee, we have one change and it's on page fourteen, and it's in red. It was just, really just for clarification about ways that we communicate to the community with pertinent information under the Collaboration with Families section. Other than that, the Safe Schools Committee had reviewed it and that was the only change that had come from that review. So, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Bullying Prevention and Intervention Plan eighty-three oh five, with this one change as noted.
Seconded.
Moved, seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, thank you. Policy one hundred, which is the policy adoption policy. That was mine also. I did review that policy and there has been no changes. I would like to make a motion to approve as presented.
Move, move, seconded.
Move, seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, thank you again. Next policy is thirty-two hundred, Staff Responsibilities. That is Mr. Flynn.
We're just gonna move that into May. I haven't had a chance to really.
Absolutely. Excellent, thank you. And policy eighty-three hundred, which is the Wellness Policy. Mrs. Hume?
Yes, I also would like to move that one into May. I talked to Julie Amaral and we just want to talk to Marie Griner a little bit more before we propose some changes.
Excellent, great, thank you for your time on that. And policy eighty-three oh one, which is the Life-Threatening Allergies Policy. That's also, Mrs. Hume?
That was me. And I'd like to make a motion to approve the policy eighty-three zero one, Life-Threatening Allergies, with no changes.
Moved?
Seconded.
Seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great. Wonderful, thank you very much. And the assignment of policies, policy fifty-five eighty, which is the Internet Use Policy. Any takers?
I can take the Internet Use Policy.
Great, thank you, Mrs. Smith. And under the public forum, members of the audience wishing to address this committee may do so at this time. Audience members are reminded that personnel issues or issues that would violate student confidentiality cannot be addressed during the public forum. Is there anyone from the public present? Let's move on, onto the calendar. Under other, April ninth, two thousand and sixteen, is the annual town elections. April eighteenth. April eighteenth through the twenty-second is Patriots' Day and Spring Vacation. May fourth is the end of the school year improvement meeting, uh, that Dr. Oakley spoke about earlier. It's at five-thirty at the Middle Senior High School Learning Commons. Under the Middle Senior High School, April sixth, we have Life Touch Spring Photos. On April seventh, World Cultural Night and French-Spanish Honor Society inductions from five to eight P.M. in the auditorium and the cafeteria. April fourteenth is the National Junior Honor Society Induction at ten-thirty A.M. in the auditorium. April twenty-eighth, excuse me, is the National Honor Society inductions at six P.M. in the auditorium and caf- cafeteria as well. April twenty-ninth, freshman and sophomore dance, so, from seven to ten P.M. in the cafeteria. May sixth and seventh is the School Musical Little Shop of Horrors at seven P.M. in the auditorium. And on May seventh is the Scholarship Toll and Car Wash, and the car wash begins at ten A.M. And where would that be?
I believe it's gonna be right out front here, right in the bus lane. I believe.
And May thirteenth is the Middle School Honors Breakfast at seven forty-five A.M. and the High School Honors Breakfast at nine fifteen A.M., and they're both in the cafeteria and then the auditorium.
At the Howard School on April eighth, Electromagnetism Program for Grade Five at one fifteen P.M. in the gym. April eleventh, Dare for Grade Six. April twelfth, Riff for Grades Four and Five beginning at twelve forty-five P.M. On April twelfth, the School Council Meeting at two forty-five P.M. in the conference room. April twenty-seventh, Dare for Grade Six. April twenty-ninth, Myth Masters Program for Grade Four and Six at one fifteen P.M. in the gym. On May second, Pride Assembly at one forty-five P.M. in the gym. May second through the fifth, Grade Five E.L.A. Park Testing. May sixth through tenth, Grade Six E.L.A. Park Testing. May tenth through thirteenth, Grade Four Math Park Testing. May tenth, PTO Meeting at seven P.M. in the library. On May eleventh, Rock Detectives Program for Grade Five in the gym all day, and May thirteenth, Dare for Grade Six.
Roseell McDonald School, April fifth, Book Fair for Grade Two. April seventh, Book Fair for Grade Three. April twelfth, uh, Riff Distribution, eight forty-five to ten A.M. in the cafeteria. April thirteenth, PTO-sponsored Wingmasters, North American Birds of Prey for Grade One. May ninth, Fenway Park Field Trip for Grade Two. May eleventh, PTO-sponsored Dig into Dinosaurs for Grade One. May eleventh, the Art Show from five-thirty to eight P.M. At the Spring Street School, April seventh and eighth, Book Fair. April twelfth, thirteenth and fourteenth, Kindergarten, two thousand sixteen-seventeen screenings. And April fourteenth, School Council Meeting at two forty-five.
Great. Um, I just wanted to add one item on the Howard School calendar, which is the Nature's Classroom Trip, which is April twelfth through the fifteenth, because we are excited for that. Maya knows.
Excellent. I'd also, Molly, you're aware also that the Internet fifty-five eighty S is part of that?
Yes, as a student, yes, I'll do both of that.
Because they have separate policies.
Yeah, I'll do both of those.
Thank you. The next regular school committee meeting is Monday, May sixteenth, at six-thirty P.M. in the Middle Senior High School Learning Commons. I have a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
Moved, seconded. All in favor? Aye, excellent, good night.